Stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the civil with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Swart.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Is approval of minutes from March 6, 2018. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Turn to approve the minutes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Minutes have passed. Comments and suggestions from citizens. If anybody has anything they want to say, please fill out a blue card or just come up to the podium. And you don't need to fill out a card. Just give us your name and add. Oh, you got one already. Ben Fullerton. You're the only one tonight so far.
Okay. Well, good evening. Real quickly, and to be honest with you, I just saw this today when I was looking up the minutes. So I thought I'd put a couple notes together. But Ben Fullerton, 503 Oak Street. And I wanted to address item seven tonight on committee reports, Public Services Stormwater deal. So, you know, I've kind of talked to you before about it. So I live right on the corner of Oak and Elizabeth Street. And even in Mr. Fry's memorandum, he even mentions that intersection flooding. So first of all, I think that's a great idea. I hope you guys, I hope you pass it. And I can't believe this, but I think we should do more. So this is the deal. So that intersection, so I've lived there since 89. So what's that, 29 years? So that intersection, we've talked about it, it floods. You get two inches of rain and boom, it's there. So we know about it. So, you know, it's the whole, the school apartments and there's, and that's a whole nother deal. So all that water comes down, and I think we've addressed it. But so what I, but what I saw, and what I'm proposing, or maybe even look into it, because it doesn't even seem like it could be true. But, and I understand, you know, laterally it all off, but it even says in the, in the notes here, how to, to put new laterals down Forest Street, and that's fine. But I think we ought to address the area by my house. I got a little bit of skin in the game. And so, you know what I'm saying? And this memorandum even shows the laterals. And it's funny, see, that road was redone in 98, and I can't believe if they didn't put a lateral in there. But it's hard to explain up here with my hands and everything. But it comes down, and it comes down to school, and then the lateral goes up and around through George, and then Jefferson, and down Elizabeth, and then it shoots down towards the, towards the west. It just doesn't make any sense. So to wrap it up, you know, could we just look at maybe opening up those pipes, pumps, or rerouting or something like that?
I'm sure we'll.
And maybe I've got the card a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess, I guess we'd have to have the DPW look at it and see what they have.
I'd be willing to, you know, help them with that.
Sure. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Hi. We're Karen and Joe Gussi. We're here for eight D and E. And I just wanted to thank you all for listening last time and tabling the discussion and for providing clarification on the ordinances for number 26. We really appreciate that.
Sure.
And we look forward to continuing to work to get this job done. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda, the first, there are several items on the consent agenda. Licenses. There's an electric utility easement agreement between the city of Oconomowoc and PBJC Oconomowoc LLC, which is Mills Fleet Farm, and a resolution proclaiming April 27, 2018 as International Migratory Bird Day. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
The committee reports, Public Services, first item is Consider Act and Resolution Declaring Authorized Representative to Request Grant Funding from Wisconsin DNR Urban Point Source and Stormwater Management Grant Program for Forest Street. Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is part of the DNR grant application process. They have councils approve resolutions indicating that should the grant dollars be awarded to the city for the project that we're requesting, that the city would carry through and complete the project. The project that we're talking about tonight for the grant is just the stormwater pond. And that's a 2019 slated project for the construction of about a two acre pond on a parcel that the city owns down on Worthington Street, just west of the Imagination Station parking lot area. And the gentleman is correct that we have water issues in that area. And so in 2021, as part of this overall project and part of the resurfacing of Forest Street, we're going to be adding larger pipes, but we're also including Westover Street, which will go down to the intersection that he's referring to, and we'll look to pick up the water from there also. So we will be looking at that entire area in one way or another, address those couple of intersections that do have the flooding in addition to what's coming down Forest Street. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Just a few real quick clarifications on your memo. You say the water quality pond, is that only going to be 300 grand or is that 600?
It's 600,000.
But it, so in your fourth paragraph, you talk about it, $150,000 limit for the grant is half of the project?
The grant application allows you 50% of the project cost up to a maximum of 150,000.
I see. Okay.
So we'll be asking for the maximum of 150.
When you said this is in our long-term financial plan, do we have actually money set aside for this out of, okay?
No, yeah, as I mentioned in committee, as part of that plan, we were looking at, when we were looking out that far, looking at approximately 1.1 of the 1.3 million as a borrowing, and then roughly 285,000 was earmarked to come from this grant, and then also contribution from the Oconomowoc Watershed Protection Project, because we are removing phosphorescent suspended solids from the water prior to it going directly into the Oconomowoc River. Thank you. Kevin?
The 1.1, do we have an idea of what institutions you're going out to, to acquire these funds?
I can address that. When the city goes out for a borrowing, we will look at two different options. Either going to market for the borrowing in which we do a competitive sale. We'll use a broker to help us obtain bids on that. And then interested institutions can place their bid, and then we can choose the most advantageous to the city. The second option is to look at a state trust fund loan. And depending on how the rates are and where the market is, we'll take a look at that at that time and go the most advantageous route to the city.
We don't go through local banks.
Okay.
This is market-based.
Okay. And there's, there's an interest associated with all of this?
Yeah, but it's very low. We do need a motion and a second on this resolution?
Move to approve. Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business. First item is Consider Act on Ordinance to Amend City of Oconomowoc Comprehensive Land Use Plan, 2010-2030 for property located at 1101 South Silver Lake Street, the former YMCA site. This is the, give the ordinance its second reading by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. It basically gave its, its reading. Do you have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, next is Consider Act on Ordinance to Rezone Lands Residential, Residential Multi-High District for Property Located at 1101 South Silver Lake Street, which is the Silver Lake Street senior housing. This is to give the ordinance its second reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, next item is, excuse me, Consider Act on Ordinance to Repeal and Recreate Section 17.808 of the Municipal Zoning Code relating to Procedures and Administrations of Variances. This is for its second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have something to add, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Common Council, you did recommend the ordinance that amended the variance section of the zoning ordinance. There was some discussion regarding specifically subsection number nine. At that meeting, the attorney, Eric Larson, was present. He said he would go back and look at that section. I believe Alderman Rosick had some concerns about the time constraints placed on it. We did ask him to look at it. He did supply some updated language, and we incorporated that into the code that you have in your packets. So it's shown in, you know, a red print, and it does give the Zoning Board of Appeals the flexibility of granting longer timelines. And then if they don't grant that, and it does take them longer, the zoning administrator position may extend that up to six months on a case by case basis.
Do we have to change this as amended then?
Yeah, approve the ordinance as it is before you.
Okay, which is the way it is now?
Right.
Okay, good. Awesome. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, item D, Consider Act on Conditional Use Permit for Farlow Lake Terrace Condominium Located at 515 East Grove Street. We need a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
So moved.
Second.
We're going to explain what we can and can't do?
Sure. The, well, I think our attorney will help me on that a little bit. But the conditional use came with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. They acted on this back in December of 2017, so last December. It's been on hold. There was first some concerns with the condominium plat that the applicants, that was a condition of the, of the conditional use permit moving forward. They had some hurdles to get through with the plat. They got those lot lines worked out. They came before the council with the conditional use, as you recall at the last meeting. There were some concerns regarding item number 26, the payment of impact fees. Since then, Eric Larson has done some legal research with our code, and basically figures the, there's no building code that triggers the impact fee. So that, that code is not valid. I'll let Attorney Riffle maybe expand on that.
Essentially, you can cause, you can charge an impact fee if there's a new impact. There is not a new impact. Simple as that. So you can't charge the fee.
Okay.
So we recommend approval.
Recommend approval subject to a modification because we did not take the liberty of removing number 26. We felt that must be a directive of the council. So any recommendation, staffs could support an amendment to remove number 26 impact fee.
Alderman Shaw?
Well, the question I have on that is that this doesn't create any kind of precedent for any future, you know, problems, anything like that?
It is what it is. I mean, if you have like two structures on a residence, and you just simply change the ownership structure, it doesn't change whether or not there's a new impact to the city. They're both receiving the same services. You're not creating anything different. So that's the, the nature of the opinion.
The only thing we could do is redo the ordinance.
Okay.
At some point.
No, 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 we wouldn't change a thing.
Okay, into that.
You can only charge an impact fee when there's an impact.
Okay.
So then we're looking to eliminate 26.
Yes.
Right.
Then my question, which is right with what Charlie's talking about, is paragraph eight also had the sewage fee. This 3614, there's also the water impact fee. The memo and the council background doesn't address those things. Have you talked with the folks about the sewage charge in the water? Are they okay with that? Because it's still about four grand between those two.
Right. Staff's understanding that those are different. Those are based on use. This impact fee is different. That's for, for an impact to the community. This is specifically for that specific property. There's rules that have to be followed that, that talk about those costs being in sewer availability charge.
Kevin?
Can I make a motion to remove the impact fee on that?
Number 26.
Number 26?
Okay. So you're making a motion to amend the conditional use permit to.
That is correct.
Item 26.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we're talking about the amendment. Any discussion?
Pull that first, then.
Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, now the ordinance, or the conditional use permit is amended? Any other comments, Matt? Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, so are we leaving the sewage in? I mean.
Yeah, that's more of a use fee than it is a impact fee.
Do they, so the water one, I guess I don't have a problem with because they're, they're going to need a new meter install. But is there something extra that has to go in for the sewage too that our guys have to actually do?
The sewer and the water impact fees, the trigger for payment of those is the meter, the meter size. Where the city impact fees, like the park fee, is building permit. So the additional meter on the property under our code would trigger the additional sewer and water impact fee.
I, I understand the water, but how does that affect the sewer?
The sewer is the same. It's the same meter.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And it applies to both services.
I guess I should have known that, huh? I've got one in my house.
Your sewage fee is based on how much water you use.
Well, yeah, I got that. I guess I don't have a problem with that then. I just hope, I hope the folks that are here were told that that was going to be the case.
Yeah, they knew about that.
Okay, good. Just a nod. Yeah, okay, good, cool. That's it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor on the amended ordinance. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, next item is Consider Act on Condominium Plat for Farlow Lake Terrace Condominium Located at 515 East Grove Street. Need a motion to approve the condominium plat.
So moved.
Second.
This condominium plat actually divides the, well, it, it creates a second tax key number and a separate ownership of the dwelling into two various units. This was a condition of the conditional use permit that they redo this. This will form unique ownership to each of the two different units in the, in the structure. The Plan Commission did review this, and they recommended it. This is a nice, they, an updated survey was done. There was some glitches. They found some previous mistakes were made, and they, they have since corrected all those. Now the staff is very happy. We have a nice clean plat of survey showing the proper lot lines and the dimensional coordinates. So we recommend approval.
The property, the lot basically gets split. Two separate owners of the property.
Two separate ownership will be shown at the Waukesha County. Two separate tax bills will be going out.
Yeah, just for the record on this, I did receive a call from one of the property, adjacent property owners up there. And I know that from history that there has been issues with a couple of the neighbors up there, and it has to do more with the placement of driveways, parking of vehicles, how close they come to the neighbor's fence and some of that. So it won't affect how I feel about this. I mean, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I'm just asking you to continue to be very, very cognizant of the fact that there is an issue there and to continue to work with the adjacent property owners on it because it is a unique situation, so.
I'll second that. I took a phone call as well on that, so.
I won't go through it again.
No. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the condominium plat. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Okay, staff reports. Jason, you can come back up. Planning Department Annual Report update for 2017 and 2018.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me take this opportunity to talk about what's been happening in the planning department. 2017 was another very exciting year. I have so much to tell you that's been going on. You know, I could talk about a lot of different things tonight. I could talk about the development applications that my department's reviewed. We, we approved 142 applications in the year 2017, and I don't want to take the credit for it. We actually have a very good team, you know, in all the departments. A lot of people get their hands involved in these applications. But, you know, we're very proud of like the Mills Fleet Farm and the downtown projects going on and all this stuff happening in the northeast area of the city. So we could talk about that. We could talk about the subdivisions that are, that are going on. You know, we approved six different subdivisions came before the city in 2017. You know, these provide growth for the city. These are just three examples of, of the city's subdivisions here. We could talk about all the zoning compliance that my department's done. We actually resolved 45 various cases in 2017. These are actual photos taken last year. You know, we have the chickens. We have parking on grass and vision corners. I mean, people were actually, you know, pulling up to the intersection, and that's what they're trying to look through to see if cars are coming. So these are all zoning code requirements listed in chapter 17 that we go out on a weekly basis, put the, the yellow vest on and investigate. We could talk about all the 2017 initiatives that we actually accomplished. If you remember, we did that housing study, you saw that presentation in November 7 of last year, giving the council an update on all the current numbers where we're at. We did the East Wisconsin Avenue ordinance for the corridor, improving the, the look and, and feel of those buildings that will be constructed. And we did a lot of website updates. You know, we've done a lot more too. I mean, we did text amendment for accessory buildings, which was brought to me by one of the council members. We did zoning map updates. We've done, you know, impediment analysis for affordable housing. We, we did a whole bunch of initiatives last year. We could talk tonight all about the 2018 initiatives, the comprehensive plan. The RFP is currently out for review by consultants right now. Southwood Area Attachment. Planning has been assigned with the Clerk's Department to, you know, champion that effort for an attachment of almost 40 acres coming into the city. And the sign ordinance, you know, I'd like to take that on. I mean, we have a lot of other things too. I want to look at the annexation process, the subdivision ordinance, the official map. There's, there's a lot to talk about. But really, you know all of this. You know, what don't you see? You know, you know this because, you know, every February, you get a copy of the department's annual report in your packet. I've been doing this for 12 years, and I list out everything. Plus, a lot of these applications that I've talked about come before you. You know, every, twice a month, I'm up here talking to you. So what don't you know? That's what's important. Well, this is a big slide, you know. I'm the first point of contact for all the developers that come to the city. I organize and run staff meetings twice a month. We issue all the temporary use permits for events that are on private property, not the ones in the street, not the runs, not the, not the moonlit movies, not, not anything in parks, but on private property like when Harley Davidson wants to have some events. We assist businesses through the occupancy process. Every business that comes into an existing building, they start with, with me. The, we review most signs that are out there, the permanent signs. They have to comply with zoning requirements. We prepare all the Plan Commission agendas and all the staff reports that are inside those packets. We inform the applicants of the, the meetings, such as this one tonight. We answer the phone on many topics. My phone rings constantly. We review and approve each single-family home for zoning. Every home that comes into the city, I have a checklist that I got to go through to check everything about that home. Setbacks, height, driveway setbacks, number of access points, et cetera. We create background and recommendations for Architectural Commission. We serve as the Zoning Board of Appeals staff. We draft zoning ordinances, public hearing notices, and zoning determination letters. We get a lot of those from banks and mortgage companies and realtors. I just got one earlier tonight. We create a list and maps for all the public hearing notices. The clerks rely on planning to put these address lists together so the proper people get noticed. We place those public hearing signs on the properties. If you've noticed, there's three of them out in Pap's Farms right now. I put those out last week. We inspect and respond to all zoning complaints in the city, and we distribute plans that come in for review. I have to send these out to my review team. We put a comment letter together for technical review. So just wanted to share a little bit with you some of the daily activities that we do behind the scenes. Now, some of the fun stuff, you know, it's, it's nice to see that people actually do listen to us. We work with applicants. Here was a building that came in, and on the left is what they kind of initially shot out there. And then we decided it really didn't meet the standards for Oconomowoc. We asked them to update it. We added that pitched roof, and we made it turn red. Not the first time. First, it was brown, but they ripped that off and put red back on. They added a tower element. They added the bracketing, the decorative lights. So, you know, we feel it's really important to get that Oconomowoc look and not the cookie cutter type building. Here's an administrative change that many of you not are aware of. You know, these are happened behind the scenes. You know, the canopy was suggested on the left, and we actually, you know, looked at that and said that doesn't blend in with the rest of the building. So we actually had them wrap those in brick, add a base to match the rest of the building, and add a much thicker and more defined cornice on the top. So now these are the same style as their, their gas station and then nearby area. So those are some things that you might not see and be aware of. This little area of the city, it's part of a planned development. And, you know, the developer was reluctant to, to put it in, and, and the planning department really pushed. I mean, there's letters that I wrote to them stating it had to go in, and, you know, we had to tell them we really wanted this to go in. We worked hard to get that in. We had to keep at it and be persistent to get that in, and it, I think it turned out very nice. For zoning compliance, you know, here's an example. You know, you always hear that we do zoning compliance. What does that mean? Well, here's a business that had some heating exchange units and that were directing noise. We received a complaint from an adjacent neighbor, and we worked with the applicant, and they actually ended up putting a fence up. Now the noise goes up instead of out. And now the neighbor's very happy. So you don't hear about this every day, but this is the kind of stuff that we do behind the scenes. We're also involved in the community a lot. I, I serve on the Silver Street Transportation Board of Directors. I'm also the chair of the Silver Street Fundraising Committee. We're doing quite well. We're getting a lot of money in. I'm a high school speaker for several classes, including the Civil Engineering and Architecture class. I've been doing that for years. I also went and spoke just a couple months ago to the Business Economics class. I'm also a representative for the city for the Waukesha County Planners Group. We meet a couple times a year and talk about various topics going on in the county. So with that, I'm going to wrap it up. I just want to say I look forward to another year providing a service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Excellent report. Any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jason for all his help. Every time we get a pack, there's always some information that I have questions on and stuff, and you always have an open door policy with, for all of us that I have seen, and want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I want to thank Jason too for all the work he does. I work with him quite a bit with Plan Commission, and I go in there, and he'll spend as much time as it takes to, to get the information to me. So I appreciate it.
Not asking everybody to vote here.
And you have outstanding help, so make sure you pass our appreciation along.
Okay, thank you.
I also want to thank you, Jason. When I came to you that day, you just didn't tell me that something couldn't be done. You gave me some options, and that was outstanding, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, echoing everybody's comments, your department, along with all the others, but your department specifically tonight, has always taken the call, always responded, always been very thorough in, in the information provided that, not only to us, but to the community as well. And I appreciate that very much.
Well done, mate.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay.
Good. Any other staff reports?
No other staff reports tonight.
Okay, excuse me, moving on, reports and comments from the mayor. I have three proclamations, so bear with me. First one, whereas Wisconsin has the highest rate of underage drinking and current alcohol use among high school students in the United States, and whereas adults provide alcohol to those below the legal drinking age or 21, of 21 are placing those youth at risk for health, safety, and legal problems. And whereas alcohol use by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risks associated with acute impairment, but also because of the grave threat to their long-term development and well-being. And whereas it is illegal to give or allow your teen's friends to drink alcohol in your home, even if with the parent's permission. And whereas anyone found guilty of purchasing or providing alcohol to any youth other than your offspring or legal ward is subject to both state and local sanctions, in addition to any civil action that may occur as a result of damages or injury related to the offense. And whereas adults have the authority and responsibility to our youth to provide them with alternative opportunities by creating alcohol-free activities. And whereas Waukesha County Drug Free Communities Coalition, through the Parents Who Host Lose the Most, Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking Campaign, provides the educational materials to raise community awareness regarding this illegal and unhealthy practice. And whereas the City of Oconomowoc strongly encourages residents to refuse to purchase, provide, or pour alcoholic beverages to underage youth and to take the necessary steps to hold those who engage in this illegal and unhealthy practice to be responsible. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Oconomowoc not only discourages the use of alcohol by those below the legal age of consumption, but also sorts all residents of Waukesha County to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to those underage youth and pledges to support the City of Oconomowoc Police Department efforts to identify and deter this illegal and unhealthy activity. Now therefore, I, David Knoll, Mayor of the City of Oconomowoc, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 to be Parents Who Host Lose the Most, Don't Be a Party to Underage Drinking Month. That's the first proclamation. Second proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural, or Agricultural, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, given us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Oconomowoc has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, David Knoll, Mayor of the City of Oconomowoc, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day in the City of Oconomowoc and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and support our city's community forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote well-being of present and future generations. The last proclamation. Excuse me, whereas our city is a community of compassion and dedicated to being a wonderful place to live and raise a family, and whereas every family faces challenges that require faith, love, and hope. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a disturbance of psychological development in which use of language, reaction to stimuli, interpretation of the world, of the world and the formation of relationships are not fully established and follow unusual patterns affecting the social, learning, and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas autism affects one in every 150 children born today, over 1.5 million Americans today have come, have some form of autism, including some families of our own city. And where it is known that with proper education, training, and community living options, individuals with autism can lead distinguished, productive lives in their communities and strive to reach their fullest potential. And whereas the annual cost of such disabilities grow to the billions of dollars and yet service options lag the needs of those impacted. And whereas our community supports increasing awareness of this challenging disability, research and services for those in need. And whereas a community, whereas, whereas we as a community seek compassion for those families facing this challenge. Now therefore, I, David Knoll, Mayor of the City of Oconomowoc, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Autism Awareness Month in the City of Oconomowoc and urge all citizens to increase their knowledge and understanding of this disability, recommit to improving the lives of individuals and families impacted by autism and create a world free of discrimination where all can achieve their fullest potential. Those are my proclamations for today. Other than that, I have no other comments except I hope everybody got a chance to go out and vote today and we'll await the results. Reports and comments from Alderman. Tom?
Whoopsie, cut me off already. Diane, could I get a copy of that proclamation on autism, please?
Yes.
And sign for it? And the second one, as far as Arbor Day is concerned, I believe it's the Quanis Club. They sell trees like on May, May 5th, I think it's like at Pickly Wiggly.
First week in May, yeah.
First week in May. It's been doing it for years and years and years and, and I, you know, for $2 ceilings about this, this big, it's amazing how fast they go and they got different other sizes too for, so for that price, it's, you know, if you're going to, anybody got new, new ones, it's great stuff.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Lou.
Kind of plays off of your proclamation for alcohol. This month is also post-prom or prom at the high school. We've volunteered over the last eight years for post-prom, which is the ability to continue on the prom activity in a drug and alcohol-free environment that's hosted by the YMCA. I'd encourage anybody that has, has kids or doesn't have kids attending the high school that if you can volunteer your time to assist in, in that, it is received very well by the, the students and it does keep those, those kids safe in an environment that plays to your proclamation.
Right. That was one of the reasons we did the proclamation this month because of prom. Any other comments? Seeing none, that's the end of the meeting tonight. We need a motion to adjourn. I didn't move it. Someone else has to move it.
So move?
Mike did, okay, Mike did. Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.